I'd like to call this meeting of the Festus City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer.
Here.
Councilman Collier.
Here.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Here.
Councilman Weiner. Councilman Dennis.
Here.
Councilman Vins.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Yep.
Councilman Tennen.
We do have a quorum. Pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Tonight's bill's total six hundred twenty-six thousand, five hundred fifty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cook.
Yep.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes. Motion passes. Consent agenda is approved. Remarks of visitors. Dr. Nikki Bruce.
I, I am the new superintendent at Festus School District, and I knew some of you by name, and I'm sure you've heard my name before, so I asked Mayor Richards if I could come and just put a face with the name, and wanted to extend my partnership with you guys as a city. I, I love the partnership we've had over the years. I've been here for many years as assistant superintendent and then was fortunate enough to move into the superintendency in July. I'm very proud to be a part of that. I'm very excited to be leading the school district. We have a lot of great things. So mainly just wanted to say hello and, and know that you could reach out to me anytime. So thank you for giving me that opportunity. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Yes. Oh, don't go there, Mike. I'm a tiger. I'm a tiger.
Mrs. Anna, Anna Mayer.
Um, so my name is Anna Mayer. I'm a licensed tattoo artist. However, I focus solely in permanent cosmetics. So when I originally applied for my business license to work in the city of Festus, I was told that there was already one tech licensed tattoo artist for the city with the residents, the population of ten thousand or less. They said that they approved me to be able to operate solely only for cosmetics, though, to where I would focus just on that. I don't do anything traditional tattoo-wise, so I do eyebrows, eyeliner, lips, after breast cancer reconstruction. I can do tattoos for that sort of thing, so more cosmetic aspect. When, um, and the, the law or that I looked up on the website was section six-one-zero-point-five-eight-zero, where it says the number of licenses is issued to one artist. So my question was, why is there a limit to just one for the tattoo businesses in this city of Festus? That was one question that I had about it, but then also if you are limiting the amount of artists for just traditional tattoo, are you going to limit it for permanent makeup cosmetic tattoo artists also? The industry is booming right now, so I can guarantee you within like probably a couple, maybe one to two months, you're probably gonna have a lot more people wanting to do the same types of things that I do. There's actually within, I would say probably twelve yards of where I do business out of. There's two businesses that just opened calling themselves med spas also. I'm in a med spa. I'm in Venti Salon and Med Spa on Main Street. But there are these two other businesses literally within a half a block of us that are doing all the same services, and then they likely are adding the same, the permanent makeup tattoo services also. But they're already operating as businesses, so are they gonna come to you and say, hey, now we're doing this also? So basically, I, I would like to know, or my concern is, are you gonna limit the permanent makeup tattoo artists also? The state of Missouri does not regulate the difference between traditional tattoo artists and cosmetic tattoo artists. You just go do it on apprenticeship to get a tattoo license. So it all falls under one thing right now, I would think, and probably the near future, they'll probably separate it to where it'll be permanent makeup and then traditional tattoo. So let's see if there was anything else. And even if like you say, yeah, we'll have more of them, is there a way to, with businesses, there's a lot of similar businesses on Main Street, like we have probably eleven to twelve hair salons on Festus Main Street. There's lash places popping up like crazy. Facial, like Skin Tactics is another one that I saw the other day whenever, there's already multiples of these businesses. If, if it won't be regulated as far as how many that there will be, can there at least be something where, you know, there has to be a general vicinity that somebody has to not be doing the same type of business right next door to you? I don't know. So hopefully that made sense. If not, I can elaborate.
Is there any questions anybody has right now?
So, so your question, just to make sure I got this right.
Yeah.
Your question is if you, if it's regulated, then what is the safe safeguard, I guess, to prevent people from doing it without coming forth and saying they're doing it?
That, but also if.
How many, do I get some sort of a, a zero area where this is my area, nobody else can come in and sustain?
Or if you're gonna, if you're just gonna approve more businesses to do permanent makeup cosmetics, even though you said, like when I applied for my business license, I had to send in pictures of the services I was doing with a letter stating how mine is different than a traditional tattoo artist, like Seed of Life is the tattoo shop that's in Festus right now. So, I mean, yeah, someday I would like to do traditional tattooing, but until what? Like, I can't do it until we have twenty thousand people in the city of Festus? Is that what that means? Is it one tattoo artist per ten thousand people? I mean, eventually I would like to do that, but I can't right now. Like, I'm basically told like, I can't do that. I can only do makeup. But yet, you're probably gonna have two more people within a half, probably twelve yards from me coming in to apply to be able to do permanent makeup cosmetics.
Is this something that we can table to have further discussion on?
She's just here to make comments.
Yeah, like I just wanna.
It's not a Q and A session, so.
Right, no, but I mean, it, it does seem like something maybe we should review.
What we have reviewed was that the restriction that exists for traditional tattooists has not been changed. However, the distinction we made was that if they were to apply for the cosmetic license, as long as, as she noted that she was able to demonstrate to us that's what she was doing, there was no restrictions on that. When we last visited this, and that's where we've left it. Now, if you wanna look at altering the traditional tattooist restriction, that would be something we would, we would need to do moving forward.
I would like to discuss it a little further.
Yeah, I would too.
The difference in like, yes, there's traditional and yes, there's permanent makeup, but also if you're gonna limit the number of traditional tattoo artists, then I feel you should limit the number of permanent makeup tattoo artists.
I, sorry, I get the point that you're making.
Okay, thank you. That's all I wanna, just make sure that I, I wasn't sounding confusing and talking in circles.
So you're saying possibly the other businesses next to you are probably doing it, that we just don't know it.
I don't think they're doing it yet, but I do have very confirmed proof that there is someone in each location that will be doing the same types of services, all the same services that I do, if not.
How old are the Nordans? Did we do this?
It's been on the books for a while, Bobby.
Okay.
The, the, the traditional tattooing, the, the provision that council made here a while back was that if they were doing just cosmetic, there would be no population restriction.
Okay, so you're still saying, that is still what you're saying going forward, that you could have five of them pop up in Festus and it wouldn't matter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to. We need to, we need to work on that.
Like to bring that up more.
Okay.
And we will.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your comments. Moving right along, we're into bids. Software and services for BSNA cloud upgrade.
Good evening, everyone. So this is a first. I'm actually coming to you with the bid. So as I mentioned in the staff report, this is a, a way to upgrade our BSNA software to the cloud version. This will not only help my department tremendously, but will help all the departments in the city, and I think it will be a huge change for the building department. And so I am requesting the council to accept the proposal from BSNA Software and allow the city administrator to enter into an agreement not to exceed one hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, unless you have any questions. Or if Greg wants to add anything.
It's awesome. We got a demo on this, and I, I, within the first five minutes, I was like, where do we sign? It's amazing. And, and she mentioned the building department, the work that they'll be able to do in the field. This, this basically takes us away from the desk and we're able to, to integrate with BSNA from, from anywhere.
Sounds like it's about time.
So. They handle all of our APPO, our timesheets, our payroll.
Utility billing?
Utility billing. They are, they essentially are sole provider for, for basically all of our financial services.
Steph, what do we, what do we budget for that?
What do we budget for this? We budgeted one hundred and fifty-four thousand. Well, you mean just for this part? Yeah, one hundred and fifty-four thousand. Yeah, so I just said not to exceed one hundred and fifty-four, just, just in case.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. I'll ask for a motion to approve the bid for one hundred and fifty-three thou- a hun- not to exceed one hundred and fifty-four thousand for software and services for BSNA cloud upgrade.
So moved.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yep.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everybody.
Next bid is from the fire department for self-contained breathing apparatus.
Mayor and city council, you have before you a staff report to purchase forty-two air packs. These are the air packs that firemen wear on their, on their backs when entering the buildings. The it's will be through the Ellen Brock, Leo Ellen Brock Company. They're a St. Louis-based company that we've dealt with for many years and had good, good service with them. Also, it's through the, the HGAC. It's a processing bid, like the, like the state bid that we've used before. So request to you the purchase of the gear or the air packs. The physical year this year was three hundred thousand was budgeted, and we're at two, two forty-nine thousand, two seventy-five.
What's the age of the O ones, chief?
They are, so NFPA requires a fif- they're fifteen-year, and we will be reaching that fifteen-year, I believe, coming in two thousand twenty-five. That's why we wanted, we's got, we had this act on next year, but I think next year's gonna put it very close of meeting that deadline of our packs expire, and so we moved it to this year's budget.
So when would you see them, Chuck, after you, like, how long does that stuff take to get in?
Right, uh, they are saying, I think, uh, six, eight weeks, I think, on the air packs.
Oh, that, that's pretty good.
Is that, do you know?
Uh, I don't know.
I, I, yeah, I know, I know our turnout gear was longer, but on the air packs, I wanna say six, eight weeks. They weren't, they weren't a year out. They were, I'd say less than six months.
So would you basically use up the other ones first or just jump into the new ones or?
Oh, no, once, once these are in and, uh, the, the staff is trained on them, because they do have some new features out. You know, the greatest, latest and new, new features they have. So once everybody's trained on them and, and everybody's gotta get their masks, you know, fitted, and then we'll put them in service and replace, replace them with the, you know, take our old ones off the truck and replace them.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Is there a market for refurbishing the old ones?
Uh, there is, but I don't think it was much of a savings. What, what we do is, because there are, they are reaching their expiration date. The Safe Fire Marshal's Office has forms that you fill out and you actually donate them, because there's some, there are some fire departments, you know, just south of Missouri that don't care about the expiration date, because they don't, they don't have nothing. So the state fire marshal office takes them, and it takes the liability off of, off of us. We, we pretty much donate it to them and they, they disperse them out to wherever the department might need them.
Are there any other questions? This is a piece, piece of gear that our firemen need to remain safe when they're fighting fires. So, you know, we need to get the best equipment for. So I'll entertain a bid, entertain and a motion to approve the bid from Leo M. Ellen Brock Company through the Houston-Galluston Area Council for two hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yep.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes. Motion passes. Chief, get your air packs.
May I keep the floor, please? Sure. With that being said, can I have approval from the council to move the remaining of the money, approximately fifty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars to other line items where we may use it to purchase may, uh, some more sets of gear? We do have fifty thousand dollars budgeted in gear this year, but with the price of gear that went up, we could still use some, some extra sets of gear. Because it also, it reaches its expiration date. We have some helmets getting ready to expire and got a couple of firemen, new, new boots and stuff.
Stephanie, doesn't that just stay in the same?
Yeah, it is. It's within the same line item. It's just a different. Yeah, so it's not a big deal to move some, the money. He can just, whoever brings it up to you guys the next meeting or the following meeting, make the mistake that, as long as you're good with it.
I can't hear what she's saying. Is her mic on?
Uh, it's, she's sitting out in the audience, Kevin. The, the, the request from the chief for the balance of the funds to be used for turnout gear. Turnout gear and the SCBA packs all are part of the same line item. So it doesn't require a lot of financial gymnastics to be able to appropriate the funds from one purchase to another, because they're all part of the same line item.
Thank you, thank you.
Do they still have to bring you the receipts or just go buy?
Yeah, no, they'll, they'll have to go through the bid process to buy their turnout gear, just like.
So they just can't go buy something?
Correct, correct.
All right.
We, we still have to approve it. It's just the money sits there. It's just unappropriated funds. That's the difference.
Well, that's why I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, we, well, we got it. We got it organized. We have to prove a certain amount, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
West Main Street and Collins Drive traffic study.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, joining us this evening is Ms. Sean White from CBB. She's on the Zoom. So if you guys have questions that are beyond my expertise, you can feel free to call on. Sean, this evening for your approval is the traffic study for the Main and Collins intersection. You know, some months ago, we contemplated a new commercial development there, and we all, I think, came to the same conclusion that that's a really difficult intersection, and it might need some work. None of us know exactly what that work is, but we'd like to have an engineer look at it. That's what CBB is gonna do. They're also going to evaluate perhaps some different funding solutions too. So if there's a way that we can fix the intersection, maybe not have to pay for it all ourselves, that'd be great. So that's what is in front of you for your approval tonight, fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars for that engineering work. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
No, it's just, it's nice that it's finally happening.
Yeah, we wanted to wait till school got in session, so the, the car volumes, when they take counts, that was, you know, relevant.
We, we know that's one of the bad intersections right there, so it would definitely go, something good coming from that, so.
It's a bad one.
Yep.
Yep. Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract with CBB engineering for engineering services not to exceed fifteen thousand, five hundred.
So moved.
Motion's been made.
Seconded.
And seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Motion passes. It is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next bid we have is for a new John Deere Mini excavator from Public Works.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, normally, when I give these staff reports, the staff writing them are not in the building, but tonight we have the rare occasion that Mr. Chuck Boyer is in, in the, in the building. So if I mess anything up, Chuck, you jump on the mic real quick, all right? So for this evening, we're asking you to approve the purchase of a new mini excavator. This is not replacing the one we have. It's gonna be one in addition to the one we have. It's, it was approved in the budget, obviously. It's a little bit larger unit than what we've got. We believe it'll help us do the sewer and water line repairs, get through that concrete and bust up the streets quicker and still have great mobility, not, not be too bulky. So that's what we've got in front of you. The funding is eighty-two thousand dollars. Unfortunately, the, the bid came back a little bit higher, eighty-three thousand, seven hundred, so we'd like to take the balance from the unrestricted water funds, I would guess, right, Stephanie? Maybe.
Maybe.
Maybe, someplace in water department or the sewer department.
Question, Matt. We just did our budget and we just firmed up all of our quotes. I did the same thing at the county. How did we go over already?
They changed the price. Chuck, do you mind?
Yeah.
Put your mic on, please.
When we did the budget several months ago, that's the, the number they gave us. And then once the, a few weeks ago, I reached out to them for an updated quote to, to come, to put a staff report together to come to you, and actually it was higher. Actually, it was close to eighty-seven, and I'm like, whoa, that's, you know, that's quite a bit. That's a big jump and, and our sales rep, like, well, you know, let me see what I could do. Maybe we can try to meet you in the middle, and eighty-two is what he, is what he came back with.
These are different manufacturers, different model?
Is there a different manufacturer, different model?
This is, this is on state contract.
Yeah, that's, that's.
One of the Sourcewell price actually went up.
Yeah, it's.
I thought the Sourcewell price went out with the, they gave an update on that, though.
I thought they, they've been moving the prices on everything. And in fact, I, I'm hearing rumblings that MoDOT may not even have state bid on a lot of items this year because of the prices. Chief, have you heard stuff about police cars and state bid?
The only thing we've heard is we can't get them. They opened up Chevrolet, opened up for Monday, and Ford opened up before, and that was prior to the budget being passed. So we're kind of in a scrambling mode. We've talked about city administrator. We think we'll be okay, but we're scrambled too.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I realize that, because I went from RCP pipe to elliptical pipe, and we did the same thing, but there's, it seemed like we were on our budget, and we're way too early on, on the budget year, and this concerns me, to be honest with you. So.
It's frustrating for staff.
Politely requesting we firm up future bids.
Well, and, and I'll, I'll take some of the blame on this. You know, something that Stephanie and I talked about today, when we put numbers in the budget, we're in July and August when we're doing it. It would be worthwhile to follow up with department directors and say, hey, look, let's make sure this number's good. I mean, Chuck obviously was able to get a hold of these guys a couple of weeks before we approved the budget. It's worthwhile for us, I think, to say during the month of September to get back with the directors and say, all right, let's make sure the numbers are good because of the volatility within the market, and there's a lot of it, as we've seen within the last eighteen months, for us to be able to say that this is a good number. And then that's what's finally in that, you know, the draft that is finally approved like we did on the twenty-sixth. So I think we can do a better job of making sure that a, a number that we're working with in July and August is gonna be a good number by the time it gets to September.
Unfortunately, just like in the fuel business I'm in, there's no guarantee. You get a quote, we can't guarantee after one day. It's market's been going up so bad or down. Yeah, I, I mean, the same on the parts. There's things we've been ordering and the parts are different things. We're in the same boat, and unfortunately, the cities or the state and all of them are all in the same boat. I mean, everybody knows if you order parts, you think you're gonna have that price, and then by the time you get to it, it's gone up, freight, whatever raised the price. So, Mike, it's, it's hard. I understand these guys when they get a bid. Every time I think I gotta bid, I'm gonna buy something, it changes. It's like, I'm, I'm screwed, and so.
You pay for assumption to.
Mike, Mike. We're basing our, we're basing our budget assumptions on two, two and a half percent, and we're over budget on quite a few things. It does not take long, but all of a sudden, we got a budget problem.
Well, I, I understand it, but we're at a different time era with this COVID crap, and, and it's changed the whole way of prices and business and everything.
Keep, keep in mind too, we start working on our budget probably April. So.
Right.
Coming April, I'm gonna already be going out and getting quotes for, you know, things that we're gonna be asking for, you know, for, for, you know, this, this coming budget. So when I get a quote in April, and I, I think in the past, we've done fairly well. It's just, like you said, the way the economy is right now, things are all over the place, but.
Yeah.
We, we sit down in April and start putting things together, especially when you're building a piece of equipment, because you have options.
Right.
Or when you're building a, a vehicle or something, maybe you have some options you want to throw in there too. Right, it's, it's, it's a supply and demand thing. It's, it's not just here. It's all the country. Yeah, you know, they're getting ten, fifteen percent over everything. You know, like I said, unfortunately, and I understand what Mike said, we're very budget conscious, but I think in this instance, or anything, we're buying a piece of equipment, we're kinda at the mercy of something that's out of our control, so. But, uh, yeah, like I said, and, and not to mention, I think we're lucky to be able to get one. You know, you can't just go out and buy stuff anymore. It's just not there.
No, very true.
Given all of that, do we need to discuss, can we build in more cushion?
And that was something that Stephanie and I talked about. It, it, it's interesting, because the, the conversation specific to two items on the agenda tonight, the SCB, SCBA packs, the, the breathing apparatus. We knew that based on the suppliers and whether or not we're going to be able to get the, the consortium pricing, we felt that we needed to build in that plus say twenty percent, and we came in fifty thousand dollars under budget once we were able to get the consortium pricing. Here, because of the volatility at the state level and the things that you've heard from Matt and chief here tonight related to MoDOT pricing or state pricing for patrol cars and things like that, that's all very real. The fact that they may have to go away from that, it's in its entirety, which makes it very difficult for counties and municipalities to be able to try to, you know, coattail onto that pricing. Yes, we, we probably, not probably, yes, we should do a better job of making sure that the number that we have is one, as current as possible, and two, build in a certain amount of, as you said, cushion to be able to not have this conversation over seventeen hundred dollars. I mean, it's still seventeen hundred dollars over what was budgeted, and that can make a difference sometimes. Certainly not in, in our case, but it is, like you said, you hate to blow up a budget just ten days in. But these sorts of things, unfortunately, in the market right now, it's such a volatile market. It's, it's hard to, to plan for all of it.
I, I would almost believe that anything that's gonna take us longer to get like a piece of equipment, we're going, they're gonna pass that down to us at some point. So you can't expect them just to eat that. We're not talking a, a one percent increase. We're talking much larger percent increase and a lot of it, so I'd rather be on, maybe there's some savings to be had, but we're prepared and we're not having to.
Right.
Kind of. Kind of.
No, I, I, I think the, the best example of that is the, uh, the tandem axle truck where after we'd already ordered it, uh, it was in production and then Mercedes Benz decided the motors were going to cost six thousand dollars more. And they just passed that straight along, along to us. So, and that was something, there was no way we could have foreseen it, but that's the nature of the market right now. So certainly I think as, as Chuck mentioned, you know, uh, this heavy equipment or heavier equipment, um, and being able to get it is one thing. Two, uh, the volatility in the price, uh, is tough. It's tough. And I, I think in times, years before, you guys were pretty good, pretty solid. Right now it's, we're in a different, different time in our life and, and you cannot cannot go that you're going to get something at a price, especially like Chuck said, four months out, four or five months out. It's not going to happen. I mean, unless they have it in stock, in readiness shipping, you're not going to see the price that you think you're going to get it for.
Right, right. And I don't think there's any, there, there's no longer in stock. You look at the secondary market and used market, you, uh, there's used dump trucks out there with three hundred, four hundred thousand miles that are still selling in three hundred thousand dollar range. So we're at the, I hate to say the mercy of the market, uh, we're just going to have to do the best we can with what we need. And, and you know, like I said, when we need equipment, usually what we got is either wore out or we need another one. So I think we're good about doing our due diligence. I just think we're, we're in crazy times and we'll just have to watch it and, and, and work forward and have Stephanie sharpen her pencil.
Yeah, because they're predicting this at least another eight months for what are better.
Right.
Alrighty, is there any other discussion? If not, our, I'll entertain a motion to approve a request for eighty three thousand seven hundred dollars and McCoy Construction for, uh, a new excavator.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all.
Tonight we have one ordinance. That will be bill number forty seven hundred on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty seven hundred, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute a contract with CBB Transportation Engineers and planners for a traffic study and related engineering, incorporating said contract as part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date.
Staff report.
Uh, this is the, uh, corresponding contract for the traffic study we spoke about earlier. I don't have anything further to add.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, suspend the rules and read bill forty seven hundred for the second time and title only.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read bill forty seven hundred for the second time?
Bill number forty seven hundred, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute a contract with CBB Transportation Engineers and planners for a traffic study and related engineering, incorporating said contract as part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date. Councilman Cook. Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Motion carries. Bill forty seven hundred has passed. New business. Bids.
Oh, yes. Um, Mayor, City Council, uh, before you and in our audience tonight, Martin Gaffory with, uh, Stiefel, uh, the Public Finance Division there. We have been soliciting, they have been soliciting, uh, proposals, um, on our tax exempt lease, the tenure lease for the Verge Energy Improvements, which would be the Water Meter Project, the improvements here at City Hall and the PD, um, at the library and at Public Works. Um, we did get, I see here in Martin's letter, uh, six bids back, uh, the lowest of which is from Webster Bank, um, at a rate of three point seven five percent. Um, is callable in the year twenty twenty eight. Um, and that is a recommendation from Stiefel, uh, for us to proceed. Uh, we would anticipate being able to bring, uh, the executable lease to you for your approval at our meeting on the twenty fourth. And happy to answer any questions or Martin is, is here for that as well.
Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the bid for the city selection of purchase.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We'll see you on the twenty fourth, Martin.
And we have another bid here from Waste Con- Connections for contract renewal.
Yeah, Mayor, City Council, um, here from, uh, Ben Von der Bon, who's been our, um, contact since I've been here with Waste Connections. Uh, we've been obviously talking, uh, in the last couple of months. Uh, we'll be entering the final year of our, uh, three-year contract with Waste Connections. Um, the provision in our contract allows for an increase, uh, in the final year of the contract. Um, the amount that we were looking at for a renewal, uh, after that was going to be substantial. Uh, so what we've proposed here for your consideration is to try to smooth out the total increase into smaller pieces over the course of twenty three, twenty four, twenty five and twenty twenty six. Um, you can see in his letter there, obviously, some of the pressures, uh, that some of the other, uh, cities, uh, have. Uh, they've seen in contract renewals. I can tell you that even at, uh, these rates, we would still be among the lowest. Uh, in fact, we would be the lowest, uh, and certainly with a higher level of service than any other community in Jefferson County, uh, that use any of the major haulers. Um, uh, the, the level of service we have with Waste Connections, the, um, curbside service, obviously, the, uh, yard waste hauling, uh, the, uh, the large yard waste, uh, dumping area, the two cleanups that we have, one of which will be coming up on the twenty second. Uh, they're an excellent partner, uh, and I hope that you would, uh, consider, uh, approving the extension and, uh, we'll have a contract for your execution at our next meeting.
Is there any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to renew the contract with Waste Connections for three-year period.
So moved.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Motion passes. We will extend their contract. Next item of new business is Tree of Life Street Closure Event.
I'm not Tree of Life, I'm Daisy Chain. But I'm here representing all of the stores on Main Street for our November fifth event, the Ladies Night Out. We want to make sure we are approved to have the street closed from Mill to Briar Town is the main reason. And the other one was there's supposed to be some electric in some of the poles. But we don't know how you find out where the electric is. Does anybody have a comment?
We have someone can help you with that, Sue. Uh, all the poles actually have electric. You do have to cover the photoelectric cells, uh, so that the lights come on, but then the power comes on, but we can help you out with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, closure of the street is the main reason for my being here.
Is there any discussion?
We want to close at about three thirty. That'll wait. It'll give the band and the other few vendors time to set up because it starts at five.
Okay. Chief, you have a problem with it?
No. Do the, the businesses on Main Street all agree with this or?
Yes, we've already talked to everybody about it.
Okay, the restaurants are okay with it, like Pogalino's and
Mm-hmm.
They, they still get around and have their business centering out?
Yeah, we've had the discussion with, with most everyone on the street.
Did anybody object to it?
Kevin, I, I, I can just throw in my two cents. I attended this event last year and, uh, the people being able to mill around on Main Street and pop into the shops. Uh, I was telling the story to the mayor. Uh, I was standing outside Backbone Home and a older couple came by and they said, what's going on? And I said, it's a, you just go up and down Main Street, go shopping and they've got margaritas in there. And they popped into the store and they popped back out and they were like, they were in there for ten minutes. They came back out and they said, this is so much fun. This reminds me of Main Street of old and they just, they thought this is just the best thing ever. So it was, it was very well, I think we very well received last year.
Right. And I have nothing, absolutely nothing against it. I just thought we somehow stopped at South Adams there, or Adams. But now it's going to Briar Town. Was it Briar Town last year? Cause that takes us down pretty far.
It was our first one. So we were kind of like trying to figure it all out and we didn't think we were going to have as much of responses we did. I mean, and now the advertising has gone way further than what we did last year. So we've already had thousands of people on Facebook respond.
Right. Hey, once again, don't, don't misconstrue, uh, like I said, that I, my memory ain't what it used to be, but I thought we didn't go quite as far down. And the only thing that concerned me is Pogalino's Egress there off the parking lot to get out of there. So I, I guess they still have the alleyway.
Yes.
Over to South Adams. So, but if they're good with it, that's the only thing I can think on that end that I would even, uh, closely question. But no, it's a wonderful bit. Thank you for putting it on. I know a lot of people enjoy it. So that was my only question.
Thank you so much, though. We're, we've been in a conversation with Jean and she's actually has been on the committee. So.
Is there any other discussion?
So you hope it to be as good as last weekend?
We know it's going to be bigger. Well, we call it ladies night, but we certainly welcome gentlemen.
There's a lot of people out Main Street past weekend.
This last weekend was, was a testimony to our town. Oh, my goodness sake.
Yes, it was.
Is there any other discussion? Yes.
Sorry. She mentioned that, this Mike, she mentioned that the street's going to close at three thirty. What, what time will the festivities end?
I think it's five to nine is our, so we'll open it up as soon as we.
After nine P M.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm thinking it's nine. My brain is.
Any other questions?
You need a motion, I'll make that motion for you, sir.
Thank you. I need a motion.
So moved.
Seconding it.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Sue, go ahead.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sue.
Any old business?
No, sir.
Councilman Boyer.
Just wanted to say the South Mill, uh, really looks good. Projects really looking nice down through there. Um, the trash and treasure out at West, uh, West City out there at Christ Park really went well. Seemed like we had a good turnout. Barb, you did a good job with that. Uh, there was some questions from several people. They said, how come they don't have coffee and hot chocolate vendors out there? So nobody signed up. Have you got anybody that you could contact for something like that, you think? Okay. Yeah. Uh, it's, it's all I have, sir.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Cook.
Uh, yes, sir. Couple of things. Um, Greg attended ladies night, so I was just curious on that one, but okay. Thank you for the explanation.
Do what?
So.
I'm sorry.
I, I just wrote down that you attended ladies night. So that, that was an interesting report.
I was, I was, I went there with my lovely bride. So that, that's awesome. Uh,
one thing I, I've been talking to former employees, looking at what we do at the city, we can't compete with the private companies. We know that. I've been thinking about this for a while. So what I'd like to consider or make a motion if it's acceptable, Mr. Mayor is this, sir, um, if we can restore this holiday we had today, the Indigenous People Holiday, back to our employees. To me, it would show a great faith to them. We're trying our best to, to, you know, compete with the private enterprises. We can't on starting pay. We understand that. And what I'd like to do is if it's acceptable is since we've missed this holiday, the cost would be almost nil. I would like to give every employee just an additional vacation day this year to use as they feel just to show, yes, we understand. They are doing amazing job. I want our retention rate to remain strong. It's been, you know, wavering here quite a bit. The county has stolen three, excuse me, four employees the last year, spoke to all four. If we can make things more attractive, two of them said they might have stayed. I've been racking my brain and I think this would be a small token. I really do. Um, so it, that's what I like to do, sir. If, if it's acceptable, I'd like to make a motion during this, myself holding the floor after discussion on returning the holiday and just for this year only, give an additional vacation day to the employees who missed out on this holiday because I was off, I enjoyed it. The county gets a lot more holidays than most of the cities do. The state was closed. I just think it would be a overall win-win for the employees.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Stephanie. What, what is the cost? Just ballpark.
For this year. Um, that would actually be part of next fiscal year's budget whenever we do the holiday pay. And really the only department that it will affect will be the police and fire. Uh, two departments. So I can't say the amount, but those are the two departments that would affect.
Is it something we can bring up at a later date to talk about it? Of course. I mean, it's, it's whether or not you want to amend the holiday schedule. Um, and we've done that uh, in the past, uh, with, in, in fact, this year, uh, or recently as late as late last year.
Tune in.
Um, I think the proposal from Councilman Cook is since today is Columbus Day or Indigenous.
Right.
People's Day, uh, that, um, in, in light of quote, missing that, we would give a, um, vacation day to all full-time employees, um, uh, prorated for permanent part-time employees.
Yes, sir. Just, just for this year.
And, uh, it would have to be used before the end of the calendar year.
Yes, sir.
Um.
And I'm.
Consideration.
Can you, can you pull that off, Steph?
It will be Margaret.
Can you help Margaret?
Kevin, you give us, you, you give us something to do. We'll pull it off. So that, that's, that's the kind of staff you've got working for you. The only reason I say that is a lot of people don't really acknowledge Columbus Day.
Well, we would call it Indigenous People Day.
I think, I think, I think the take home point with Mike is, is, you know, if, if we can't compete, we, we try to get something to keep you here that we're trying to stay in the, in the, in the ballpark. So, and I got something to add on that when it's my turn, but if Mike's making a motion, I'll second that motion.
Yes, sir. If the mayor accepts the motion, I will make the motion.
Can I, can I make it a denim to that? What if we just left it as a floating holiday? Don't, don't.
A personal day?
Don't tie it.
Well, we, we do have.
We have a, a single personal holiday we give now.
So, I mean, for some people, i- if I guess it depends how you look, look at it, but if somebody asked me, do you want to be off on Columbus Day or would you like to have an extra day that you can take whenever you want throughout the year? But I think a lot of people would be like, I'll just, I can, when I want to take it versus.
Like the day after Thanksgiving or one of those days that.
Take it when you want to take it versus tying it to a specific.
That, that's what I was saying.
Personal holiday.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, for this year only, I.
But would that make it easier for?
If amended that way, I'll second it still.
No, it'd be the, it would be, well, probably the same deal, I guess. I, that's a.
I don't know. I just thought it might be more, even more attractive than saying, oh, you get Columbus Day to say, oh, well, instead of just tying it to one specific day, we're giving you an extra person.
Well, I, I think the, 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 Mike makes a valid point in the fact that, um, our ability to conduct all of our business on this particular day is hampered by the fact that, uh, the, the county, the state, the feds, the banks are closed. Um, so I, I understand, uh, wanting to tie it to the particular date because.
I don't disagree, but if we can make it a variable, then.
Right. So can we make it a variable this year and then next year tie it to specific date, holiday named holiday? That way we got a cover for this year and we're already working on next year.
I, I'm not opposed. I, I would, I would probably swat that back to Gray because this is, and definitely this is your guys'. I just think if we show the employees and, and try our best, I think this is a home run for everybody.
I think the way I understand the original suggestion was that it would be a floating. This year, and then it would be tied specifically to the second Monday of October. Uh, next year and, 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 and we would amend our holiday schedule to reflect that.
I, I think I would like to leave it to this day just because it makes more sense because it ties into the financial institution because there's not a lot you can do. So. I like to give a floating holiday or floating vacation day this year because they can't honor it next year's ticket to this day.
When you say this year, you mean calendar year?
By December.
They gotta use it before the end of December.
Why don't we say, so we don't cause chaos? Why don't we say they gotta use it by July thirtieth? No. Okay. Okay. Stephanie, I'll tell you what, Stephanie, give me a recommendation, please.
Well, I would just say.
To go by December thirty.
Yeah.
How about December thirty-first? This, this infinite wisdom just came to me. So that sounds good, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make that motion, sir. Please.
I will still second it even though I'm confused.
Okay.
All joking aside, no, I'm good.
Yep.
That would work.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you, sir. Council, thank you so much.
Councilman Collier.
I have no report at this time.
Thank you, Councilwoman Templeton.
Uh, Mill does look great. Until you cross over to North Mill, but that's a different issue.
But it's on the list.
It is. It is on the list. And I just wanted to thank, uh, Matt and Mark for being so responsive to a, uh. A, uh. Resident. Concern about some zoning issues as well as, um. When Doug for being able to answer the phone when I called the police department as well with it. So it was nice to be able to pick up the phone and. Say, hey, this is what somebody's talking about and know that. I had as many people as I could possibly have looking at it at one time and I was able to give that report back to the individual that called me. So she was very happy. That makes us all, that's why we do this. And other than that, that's it.
Thank you, Councilman Vins.
Mr. Lewis. I'm getting enough residents on Horine Road again, unfortunately with the extra volume of traffic. Especially late evening. And it's probably now because it's getting dark early. Anytime after probably five thirty. So probably eight o'clock, I guess, in the evening. They're just seeing a lot of excessive. Unfortunately speeding and, um. I don't dragging or something. I mean, they're just. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I know, like you said before, you're there, it's perfect. Soon as you leave, they seem like, oh yeah, they're going, let's get going again. I know it's tough. I mean, I told my, just bring it up to you. I mean, I know it's a, it's a needle in a haystack, trying to catch them or do something with them, but. Yeah, it's, I mean, it, it is good. I mean, I haven't been around much, but they, they've been hitting me left and I do have another issue. I. On my phone, I'll get with you on it. I, I get great, yeah.
I don't know.
Someone's complaining about something, but I'll let you listen to the message, see what we can come up with on this. So. That's it, sir.
All right, Councilman Dennis.
Uh, I was able to, uh, take my son and, uh. A bunch of family and friends out to the park to watch the light show. Wasn't able to watch the whole thing. I wanted to, but we just ran out of time. That is spectacular. Thank you for all involved. It is just spectacular. It was a lot of fun. And for us that, uh, in the rumble handicap, we're able to do something like that and enjoy it. Without having to worry about getting in and out and ramps and doors and all that. It was wonderful. Uh. Uh, once again, I think, uh, the street over there on Mill is really looking nice. Uh. The good news is I haven't got a report to traffic issue on, uh, Horine. I do think that speed sign helps a lot. It really kind of keeps yourself, uh, checking your speed. Uh, one issue that I, I, I need to bring up is. The, the school, uh, the Second Baptist Church has a, a Christian school. And they were vandalized and lost, uh, catalytic converters off of their vehicles, which was a huge, huge hit to them. It's how they get around to their sporting events. It's a private school. They're not funded. Uh, can we as a city work on any ordinances concerning the. Selling of catalytic converters. Uh, uh, that maybe would curtail some of this. I know we do have. You know, a scrapyard up there and I don't know what the rules and regulations. I haven't had a chance to talk to chief. Uh, I haven't had time. But is there anything we can do to curtail this? I even found out today that you can go online and look your car up and see what your chances are. If your catalytic converter is on the big money list. And that's what they're doing now. They're picking what. Sells for the most and they're hitting it. They're not getting the ones that are fifty dollars. They get ones that are over big money. So. And just a thought, I, I, I know these people were caught on camera. I don't know where the investigation is. But, uh, anything we could do in that realm would be extremely helpful. I'm sure not only for this school, but for anyone out there that gets vandalized that has their car tore up. So.
Kevin, I think you obviously, it, it's something law enforcement agents as you're dealing with all over the state. Um, I know the, the flock cameras have certainly been a huge asset for the department to use. Uh, as far as a specific ordinance, I mean, stolen property, stolen property.
Right.
So I don't know if we need to carve out something specific. I haven't, Brian, have you heard anything? That maybe other municipalities have done specific to that?
I believe the city of St. Louis was considering legislation. I don't know if they passed it or not. I'm not aware of anything else beyond that.
Yeah. Kevin, let us, let us do a little rooting around.
I did see, one of the things that I read, some states actually require a license to buy, sell and trade of the catalytic converters. And like I said, us having that, uh, for a better word, the Oshfire was at their scrapyard, uh, I, that might be, and like I said, feel free to chime in, chief. Or you know, something I, I apologize. I haven't had a chance to talk to the chief about it, but. Just anything that we can do to curtail it because this, it really hurts when they go in because it messes up the whole vehicle because they cut it with a. A saw and they don't care what they take with it. So, uh. Yeah, any, anything would help. It'd be appreciated. That's all, sir.
All right. Thank you. Well. I don't have anything this evening. I think the city is, um. Headed in the right direction and we keep doing things to. To attract people to come into this city and spend. At our restaurants and our hotels and. That helps us all. So with that. I will entertain a motion. To go into. Close session.
So moved.
Dealing with matters of, uh, RSMO six, ten point zero, two, one, legal and personnel.
So moved.
Motion's been made in seconded. Roll call please.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yep.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Did you get Dennis?
Yes.
Motion carries. Take five minutes.